Okay, good morning. It's eight thirty. We'll call this morning as meeting to order. First item is approve the agenda, and I see we have no agenda additions.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We'll move on to citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard that are not on the agenda? I think the ones we have here are on the agenda, so we'll move on into the approval of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
You haven't got them yet.
Well, we did get them.
We got them.
Eanamillim.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried. Will you move to eight thirty-five item? That's a request for approval to add irrigation system to the northwest camping parking lot. Good morning, Joe.
Morning. Okay. Today I'm requesting approval to add a system to the northwest parking lot. That's the new parking lot, just constructed this summer. And when we originally looked at irrigation plans, we designed a system for the jail and the LEC. And we kind of looked on the map, and it, in efforts to save some money, we thought, well, we don't have to sprinkle a parking lot. But as the parking lot got more constructed and it became real, it, there's, we just, Brian and I took a look at it, and it seemed like a lot of green space, lot of landscaping and everything else. So it turned out to more than just a parking lot to us. So if we wanted it to look nice, we figured now would be the time to add that in. So, and it would also save probably a lot of time and effort from on our end for trying to drag hoses and stuff like that around. So we figured it would be a good time to do that during the installation of the LEC sprinkler system, so next spring. So the quote to add it would be fifteen thousand three hundred. And I only have one quote because it's actually kind of an extension of the LEC system because there's no water over there, and that's where we'd be tapping off of right there. So if we didn't have a system, it'd be kind of difficult to water. We have no water over there. We'd have to get some sort of watering truck system to water over there. So I'm requesting to go ahead with that project. It would be paid for out of our landscaping budget within the jail project, and we hope by doing some in-house, we're going to be doing some in-house landscaping next spring in efforts to help offset this cost, so.
Questions?
Yes, I got one question. I guess, I look at fifteen thousand three hundred dollars, I think, yeah, you got a good idea to irrigate. I mean, I'll go along with that. My question is, if we have so much green space, why didn't we make parking area out of it? I mean, I wasn't in on the planning. I know it's too late to do the funding, but if we got that much green, why wasn't there more, why are we spending fifty thousand to spend water grass?
Yeah, a lot of that green space, I think, turned out to be just a little bit bigger. I don't know if it would have been, I guess I can't speak more on the engineering design point, but, but turned out to be a little bit more as far as the boulevards and everything like that than we thought it would be. So I don't think there would be a whole lot more parking that could be created over there. But there's that drainage ditch that's big there. They've also added a lot of rock plants and stuff kind of wrapping around it and stuff, too. So I guess the landscaping in general has turned out to be a little more to take care of.
I guess I didn't see no overhead or anything like that or whatever, and can't drive over there really.
We did, initially, there was some green space planned right on the south side there, and I think we added, I can't remember, twenty extra spaces or something along there instead of having a green space. We did do a little bit of that, but like you say, from the map, it just seemed, seemed like it was just a parking lot, and then when it came to real, it was something maybe I should have seen down the line, but.
I mean, I think it's a good idea to irrigate, as long as you don't irrigate enough. Not opposed to that, you know, but if we got that much irrigation to do.
Yeah.
You know, it just looked to me like if we would have made blacktop out of this, would it's a more part, but I don't know what area you're talking about.
I think part of that, it's right, you know, for example, it's right along where the construction engineers has their trailer.
Okay.
That whole area that goes north and south, they're right along what was 10th Street there.
Yeah.
That area, and then there is a small area to the south.
Yep, small area to the south there, and then also.
It's a thin area. Like you said, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have gotten any more parking stalls out of it.
Yeah.
And part of it was designed for, there's also a sidewalk in there, and you have to have, they wanted something green between the sidewalk and the parking.
Yeah, yeah, it, there's also, yeah, that sidewalk runs along the fence that we had put up there, and, and, so mostly boulevards, but very, very difficult to water and maintain. They kind of dry up real quick if we don't have any water to them, so. And like you say, it'd be tapped off. It'd be just more of an extension of the law enforcement center, so.
Commissioner Gross, is that any more questions? Okay, the Aqua Lawn, is that, are they the, are they the outfit that got the law enforcement, or the jail?
They got, they actually, we.
Got both?
Yeah, we bid all, we bid both buildings, and they came in lower both times.
So they're the, they're the ones that are going to be doing the large green space that's going to be in front of the new correctional facility when it's done, right?
Yep, yep, the large green space, and then also front of the LEC. And they're also the company that did the courthouse this summer.
Okay.
So, you know, that's another benefit to keep, keep a uniform to that as well.
And, and part of what Joe was talking about here is there, there's also going to be a deduct, right, from the gross maximum price?
Mm-hmm.
Because it was built into that as part of their project, because some of this is being done in house, or, or, actually, not this, but some of the stuff that's being done in-house is going to have that deduct to help offset this.
Yes, yeah, so we, so there's a landscaping budget within both the LEC project and the jail project. I think it's roughly sixty thousand combined. And so what we're doing, instead of hiring that out, we're working with STS and, and the jail crew, and master gardeners and extension to kind of design our own, and then do it all in-house, and that labor, well, the labor savings will help offset the cost of adding the sprinkler system. So it's, it won't end up to be more money or anything. It'll just be a little bit more in-house time, so.
Wouldn't this come out of the jail budget or?
Yes.
It does.
Okay, it's, it's part of the, I thought you said it coming out of landscaping.
Well, it's landscaping.
Budget for, for the jail, okay.
Yep, yeah, there's a budget within that project. As far as the water, you know, they're all, they're all have zones, and we can control everything with water sensors and stuff. So the costs afterwards, you know, we can definitely control real well, so it doesn't just let it go and pay a bunch of money in water fees and stuff, too. So we, it's a, it's a nice system.
Any other, I, I do want to make another comment in terms of, you know what, we're part of a, we're a big organization in the middle of a residential community here, and I think it is important that we keep this place looking good for all of our neighbors around here as well. So I, you know, I don't have a sprinkler system in my yard at home, but I have, that's not quite as hard for me if I need to plant a water, and I can water it.
Yeah.
But I think, I think just from, you said it best, overall, in savings of labor, dragging hoses around and stuff.
Yeah.
Well, I think I fully agree with that, you know, it's just, I didn't know what area, I mean, it was, I didn't have no map here showing what area it was, so.
Yeah.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Yeah, looks like Highway is just coming in.
Yep.
We're ready for you, Dave. He always has to wear that jacket. All right, good morning.
Good morning. We've got two issue, two items on our agenda for today. First item is approve final payment for County Road Six. This was the paving project out east. We did a grading project on it two years ago, and then last year we paved it. Eric, if you want to just run through the final numbers on that quick?
Yeah, so the original contract was a little over a hundred and fifty-three thousand, and the final amount to be approved is one hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. It's a quick little project. It was about a third of a mile. We just paved, and it was the, the stretch that we graded in 2016, so it went smoothly. We actually came in a little under, and pretty happy with everything.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, we have motion to approve the final.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Just a comment. I know this wasn't something that we had on the plan right away, so I appreciate the fact that you addressed the concerns of the people out there, and it really does look really nice, so thank you.
Was this one of those that, that because of other low bids, too, that we were able to fit this in?
Yep, between that, you know, we just started having some issues, right? There were some complaints, I think they were coming forward by township and locals. There was kind of a soft spot right by Highway thirty-two, and then we formulated a plan to grade it out and then to pave it.
Who decides on the lower cost now? I mean, is it the contractor come forward, says that we overbid the job, hey, we don't want as much money, or?
No, we track the items one by one, so it's dependent on how much mix you put down, or how much grading you do, how much seeding you do. So you have to track every item in a, in a item record account, so it depends, you know, and there's times where we go over, too.
Yeah.
You know, but, so I guess our, our guys track it and try to keep on track. One thing the contractors on paving jobs normally do is on the back of the paving machine, if you just twist it up a little bit, bring it up like this far, I mean, you can dump thousands of dollars in, in a mile for thought mix, because, you know, it's forty and fifty dollars a ton. So our guys have to make sure that they keep the thickness, the right amount, and keep checking it. If you just, if you don't have any inspection on these jobs, they'll, they'll never come in on track. They'll always be over.
And kind of to just emphasize, you know, when we put together the plan, we're just coming up with our best estimate as to what we think it's going to take for material. But we measure every last thing that goes down, and then we pay for only the work completed, so.
So the change is due to the adjustment in materials, basically?
Yep, and actually, one of the items we underran on this project was the striping. If you remember, we had the federal striping project coming through, so we just decided it qualified for that project, so we used the federal money to strip it, so that saved us a little money.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. The approval of the resolution for local road improvement program grant.
Yeah, we'd like to put our name in a hat for some state dollars through this local road improvement program. They've got three different categories that qualify. One, we don't qualify. One's the trunk highway system. One is called the routes of regional significance, and the other one is a rural road safety account, and we'd like to put two projects in, one on each of those categories. We kind of thought maybe county road, and both the projects that we are going to apply for are currently in the five-year plan. The one route of regional significance, we are looking at County Road Twenty-three from Highway ten now to the landfill. We just do a Melon overlay on that roadway. And then the rural road safety account, we were kind of looking at our County Road Ten, which is from downer out to I-94. It's a two-mile stretch. It's got a lot of rutting because there's, there's just so much gravel trucks and heavy traffic running on that road. That would be, be a nice deficiency to eliminate it. Like you said, it's currently on our five-year plan. We don't have the funds to do it sooner, so with this available pots of money, counties are eligible for up to a million dollars, and we're kind of hoping we would maybe get some sort of funding on one of the projects. We don't feel we'll probably get both. That's probably not very fair for the amount of applicants that are going to be submitting, but if we were able to get, you know, possibly three, four, five hundred thousand dollars for one of them, it would really ease up our five-year plan. Usually our five-year plan, you know, in the Highway Committee, if you guys remember, it's pretty chock full, and sometimes it's even a little over full.
Yeah.
So we're hoping for good bids, but.
The twenty-three, the twenty-three one from ten to the landfill, is that on the five-year plan?
Yep, I think that's at the very end of it. We put it.
Very end, okay.
Twenty-one, yeah.
Okay.
And then County Road Ten, that's actually in 2020, but our current five-year plan, we, in order to make it a sizable project, we did have a four-mile piece on there. So we've got the two miles on this ground, and then we did add two miles west of the interstate over to County Road Sixty-nine. So that's what's currently in our five-year plan. We thought if we could even just possibly get those two miles done, then we could stretch out the ten project. We could add County Road Twenty-One from that intersection going south down to fifty-two. So there's, there's some flexibility if we get some additional dollars.
All right.
And so what the, the process is, we got it a little better than a week. Eric's going to put the application together. It's nothing near like the Tiger Grant that we just did. It's, it's the MINDOT form, and then there's some letters of support. So we're going to reach out to some of the local townships in this area, some of the users of the roadway, the sanitation folks, and the gravel truck companies, and then get some letters of support to go along with it as well.
It's a pretty competitive grant, but hopefully, you know, we're never going to get it if you don't buy it.
That's right. Can't win if you don't buy a ticket.
Yep.
I'll move the resolution of support.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Yeah, there's a second, all right. Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, all right. And thirdly, you got approval of sponsoring agency resolution for City of Saban.
I wonder if we shouldn't pull that one. We were talking with their city engineer a little bit, and we, actually, after we discussed it yesterday, we probably could approve it, but there was, there's some talk on the, on the, there's some language on these resolutions. If you do get chosen on how, those, you know, a lot of times MINDOT wants you to clarify the funds above and beyond the grant. And if you do get chosen, there's another resolution that needs to get passed that says, you know, like, in this one here, the City of Saban would apply for a grant, and if they get chosen, then typically their resolution says they want to cover all additional funds above the grant. Well, it just so happened, the projects they want to send in are on a county road, so then they're wondering, well, who should pay the additional funds over the grant? And I guess that's as far as we got, and we decided that maybe we should finish that, and then I think I'd like to bring it to the Highway Committee and discuss it a little more. I, I just don't think, I can't approve funds, you know, above and beyond our five-year plan at my level without bringing it first to this board. So I think we, they have an extra month to turn theirs in.
Okay.
They have until December, so we'll.
Why don't you just, and then the bonding projects that we did a few years ago, when does that final bond payment?
Let's see, I got my five-year plan.
It's twenty nineteen.
The final payment is in nineteen?
Yep.
That was something that years ago that we, we were able to, you know, put a lot of projects, get them done sooner, and I just wonder if, once that's getting close, if we shouldn't be reviewing that again to see if that would be a financial.
Rates are good, and construction prices are low.
Yeah, and that's the biggest thing, you know, the rates were fantastic, but I think right now even bigger is the construction rates are so low.
I think, you know, I think we did some analysis on that that showed that it really saved our, our county a lot of money, and I think it would be in our best interest to stay on top of that, if it's.
And the nice thing that might actually tie into this is that pavement management project that we're going to move forward on, that's going to give us a whole slew of overlays.
Well, that's, that's going to be this recommendation, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that what this?
You know, and then that, by the time we get that, which I would guess is middle of twenty eighteen or so, we'd be right in line to move forward on nineteen or a twenty. You know, if we did bonding in nineteen with first payment coming in twenty, it would be right in a row, and it might actually work out really good for time.
The key would be the shovel-ready projects.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Very good.
The other highway truck, I forgot to bring up, a slow sign, but Felton, we must have put a sign up by Yulin, on into Yulin from the west end.
I guess I don't remember.
You know, sometimes it puts.
Well, I had a request from Felton Residence. They want one by there.
Okay.
Must be, I haven't been up there the last couple of weeks. I don't see what kind of sign was put up.
I'll talk to Brad and see what we put up there. It'd be on, I'm assuming on the east side of Yulin?
On the west, I heard on the west side.
On the west side, and they want something in Felton, okay.
On the west side also, yeah.
All right, I'll follow up, and I'll give you a call back. A lot of little things, okay.
So I just want to comment, the project in Saban turned out really nice. Thank you for, for that. I think it adds a level of safety for sure, so thank you very much.
It did turn out good, and you know, I know when I initially, I told Eric this, too, when we first started this and got bids on it, I thought it was outrageously expensive, but there was a crew of five to seven guys out there for two weeks.
Right, straight.
So it wasn't just pouring a little concrete on the side of the road, and it actually was a lot of work, but it, it did, I agree, it turned out fantastic.
One last thing. I, I visited with the Moorhead Lions group last week, and a question was brought up about the intersection of Highway nine and twenty-six. Is, what are the warrants? Do we have, do we have a lot of traffic incidents at that intersection?
So is that, is that by Amber Waves? Is that where, the new, the new road that we're paving?
No, 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 I'm talking about state.
Oh, State Nine, wow.
Yeah, State Nine and twenty-six.
There was a fatality there not too many years ago. It was one of Deputy Green's relatives, if you remember, when Jerry Waller.
Yeah, I, the reason I brought, some of these same people were, got after me a while ago, to, not got after me, but they had requested these, the nightlights that we have up at twenty-six and seventy-five.
Okay, overhead lighting?
Yeah, and since those have come up, there hasn't been any incidents at that intersection, so they were just wondering, could that be something, or is that something that should be considered for over at?
The light or the stop sign light?
Not, I, just, 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 no, 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 just the actual lighting up of the intersection.
So that's very doable, I guess. Right now, we're actually.
It's actually cheaper than, than a lot of other things to do.
Well, we're in the middle of some, in a project just like that, but that would be a CASA trunk highway cooperative project, where MINDOT, I don't believe, would pay for very, any of it, but there would be highway safety improvement HSEP funds that would fund that.
Okay, I, I think it's, you know, I mean, it's, it's a.
Sure.
It's a request from some people to look at, so I.
That actually, I'd have to review the plan, but in twenty eighteen, we're going to, I don't know, half dozen intersections we're going to light up in Clay County.
Okay.
And that actually might be one of them.
Oh, because I know, I know it's done a lot of good up there at.
Yep.
At twenty-six and seventy-five.
And that one kind of had some angles to it, too, and this one does a little bit, too, so. We've been targeting a lot of CASA intersections with county, county intersections. We're going to, I think we did the one down on County Ten, we did the one on twelve, we did the one on twenty-six and eleven. I know for sure the plan does call for one on thirty-four by the Felton Piler, thirty-four and eleven. We're going to light that one, so we can certainly take a look at this one if it's not on the list.
It'd be worthwhile to look at, yeah.
Oh, you're right, there's, I would believe there would be warrants for it. There's, there's data that shows there's crashes there.
Okay, all right, well, I want, we just leave it at that, and you can.
Sure.
Give us an update.
Yeah.
Something on the roof. All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to our eight fifty item, and that's the adopt a resolution of support for Wild Race Watershed, one watershed, one plan project. And we have Kevin Maroud is here, Wild Race Watershed District Administrator.
Good morning. Glad to be back again. First off, I'd like to thank you for last week's work, where you appointed us another manager. Appreciate that, your quick response. That's very helpful to us out there. We got some contentious items coming up, so I like a full board. Three and three splits are not good. So today, I'm here to request a resolution of support. The man sitting behind me there, the dark-haired gentleman, is pushing me to do the one watershed, one plan. He's telling me it's really easy, because we do have Clay County, Becker County, Norman County have all, SWCDs have all updated their plan, so he says it'll be a piece of cake. I really believe him.
Didn't hear any news from the buffer.
So from this, we have already received resolutions of support from Norman County, Norman County SWCD, Becker County, and Becker County SWCD. The other good-looking Kevin back there, he has us on his agenda for November ninth. Menoman County has us on the, on November fourteenth, and the SWCD up there has us on their November agenda also. And we've received support from Polk County, SWCDs, both of them, and I haven't heard from Polk County itself, and I haven't heard from Clearwater. Polk County really doesn't need to, because they're less than five percent of the watershed, but we felt that we should, so. We sent out thirteen letters. This is your letter here. This is to get us into the grant application, and letters of support, resolutions of support go a long way towards getting us some money to do this. We could update our plan using the old plan, which technically expired back in two thousand thirteen. We were given a four-year extension to get it to, so that we could do the MPCA reps, which would give us more information and help us with highlighting projects and work that needs to be done in the watershed. We are at the end of that extension, so we're also requesting an extension from Bowser for one more year. So if I could get your support on this, I would greatly appreciate it.
Kevin, if I could ask just for, just for the people who might be watching this out there, can you, can you give us a brief description of what it means to be a one watershed, one, one plan?
Well, what they're doing is, is in the past, every county had their own water plan. The watershed has its own management plan. Now they're taking and grouping up everything under watershed boundaries. So then it requires the watershed, which we already do. We work with the SWCDs, we work with the counties, but there will be a, and correct me if I'm wrong back there, Brett, but we will be setting up an advisory committee. There will also be a policy committee that will run this thing. It isn't run by the watershed, though we will be the fiscal agent for it. So it's just a way to unify all the government entities working together for the betterment of the water in the watershed area.
Okay.
I guess that's the short and sweet, and like I say, Brett, if I miss something, let me know.
That was good.
Okay, very good. Okay, we have a request before us, since the board wishes.
Well, I think it's a good plan, and I mean, that everybody do have the same plan, whatever, so I'll make a motion to approve this.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Do you need to take a signed copy with you, or?
If Brian could just give me a copy.
Okay, we'll do that, all right. Okay, we'll move into, to this. Technically, it's nine o'clock yet, but.
Our points, we'll take a couple minutes to set that.
That's perfect, because then we'll be. I think that clock is actually just a couple minutes fast.
You came and did it already.
In the planning commission, it's the same way. One's two minutes fast, one's two minutes slow, so we always spread the differences.
We'll go on the atomic.
Yeah.
A minute.
Accurate within a hundred microseconds.
Yeah. All right, okay, so I think we're, we're ready to go here. It's nine o'clock, and we have a public hearing and intend to adopt a resolution, and this is for riparian vegetated buffers and enhanced water quality practices. And so at this point in time, it's public hearing, so we have a motion to open hearing. So moved, so moved. Is there a second?
I can.
We have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, okay. Jim or Jenny, which one of you are going to introduce this?
Tim's going to start.
Okay.
Well, I guess what we've got before us today is the buffer ordinance. That's a requirement for the county to adopt. We did accept responsibility for the, the new buffer law that went into effect in the state of Minnesota, and as part of that, we have to put into place a buffer ordinance. We took the, the basic template that Bowser had put out, and Jenny had made the changes that are required to it. We had a couple of meetings to talk about what the ordinance needed to have in it, and we've made those changes. It's been reviewed by Bowser, and now we're here to answer any questions. And now we're here to answer any questions, uh, that you might have. The ordinance gives the county the responsibility, the be all and all responsibility for enforcement of the buffer law. But there's close coordination with the Soil and Water Conservation Districts. Uh, the Soil and Water Conservation Districts worked with individual property owners to assist them in getting buffers established and determining whether they're in compliance with the buffer law. If the SWCD finds that a property owner's not in compliance, they notify the county, there is a document that they, they provide to the county, and then the county, uh, let's see, called? The SWCD would provide the county with a notification of non-compliance, and, uh, the county would then draft a corrective action notice to be sent out to the property owner, uh, containing all of the things that they would need to do. It has to contain a list of the corrective actions needed, a timeline for completion, uh, compliance standard, and then a statement as to, you know, if you don't comply, what, what are the consequences, so. Uh, I guess one of the, the two things that I have on the slides, I'm not sure how many of you have actually seen the, the buffer map that the DNR has provided to the counties, to all counties, uh, as to what, what water courses fall into the jurisdiction here. Uh, I had to cut the county into two pieces, so this is north of Highway ten. Uh, the green areas are those water courses that are considered judicial ditches and would have the one rod buffer requirement, sixteen and a half foot on either side. The blue lines are public waters, those would require the fifty-foot buffer, thirty-foot minimum, fifty-foot average buffer width, thirty-foot minimum, uh, to be established along them. And that also applies to water bodies, uh, on the further east part of the county. Uh, in Clay County, uh, the Buffalo Red Watershed District, watersheds can, uh, as far as the buffer law is concerned, take administrative responsibility themselves for the ditches they have jurisdiction on, over. Uh, the Buffalo Red Watershed District did do that. So, the red line that goes across there is kind of, uh, it's not a super accurate line, but it's good representation as to where the Buffalo Red Watershed stops in Clay County, as you go north. Everything south is the Buffalo Red, everything north is the Wild Rice Watershed District. The Wild Rice Watershed District did not take administrative responsibility for their ditches. So our ordinance reflects that, uh, Clay County has responsibility for the public waters and the ditches that fall into the Wild Rice Watershed District, as far as administrative responsibility. Uh, the Buffalo Red Watershed District has responsibility for their own ditch systems, so. And it's, it's sort of interesting, especially down here in the south half of the county, where you can see the blue line is, is public waters, and all of a sudden it turns into a ditch, and it runs as a ditch for a number of miles, and then turns into a public water again. Uh, I, I'm not exactly sure why or how the DNR has made those determinations, but, uh, we do have some of those situations here.
So, so Tim, why, why are all the green mines just on the east half of the county, is that just because lower, lower?
On, on the west half of the county?
On the west half of the county, yeah.
Um, the east half of the county has enough terrain and elevation that water actually flows, you know? It's in the valley, in the, in the valley floor, where it's so flat, that the dishing has actually had to take place to take care of the water, so.
I think it should be noted too, that all the parties at the table are aware that this map is not perfect. There's some issues where, uh, the mapping is, is questionable, and, and the SWCD has been working with some farmers on some possible alternative practices, pieces, it is only a handful of areas that we've identified. We've also, um, contacted DNR and, and visually shown them that there's some, some issues with it, but I think, uh, in terms of what the rest of the state is dealing with, I think that, that the handful of cases we have are, are much, much less than some of the counties that have a lot.
Right.
I think the problem really lies with some of those public waters pieces, is that correct?
Yeah, there's, uh, there are public waters pieces, different parts of the state, and we actually have some in Clay County where you have a grassed waterway where there's a depression, you know, there might be two inches, two inches deep, um, that a farmer actually farms through, and, um, they're considered public waters. We've actually got one of those southeast of Glinnan, I've never really understood it, but it runs across the field, and if you look really close, you can see that there's a depression, but, uh, it's farmed through on a regular basis. And those are considered public waters in some places, and they've, it's created some, some controversy. But, we don't have too many of those in Clay County.
And, and like Tim said, the statute, or excuse me, the ordinance, um, was based upon a model ordinance that was set out by, uh, Bowser to try to reach some uniformity amongst the counties that have adopted the jurisdiction for this enforcement. And, um, we did modify it just a little bit, uh, in a couple of areas. The, the largest, uh, change is under three point oh, the jurisdiction. As Tim said, uh, the Buffalo Red River Watershed also opted for jurisdiction, whereas the Wild Rice Watershed did not. So, um, under three point one, you can see that the provisions of this ordinance apply to all waters, uh, which would be the blue that Tim has shown us on, on these two maps. And then, they also apply to the green on the top there, that would be the, the drainage systems that normally would be under the jurisdiction of the Wild Rice Watershed District, but not the green under the red line, because the Buffalo Red River Watershed has retained that jurisdiction for themselves, so. So that was, uh, the largest change within the, within the scheme of the statute.
So, if I can, Jenny, how, how do we, how do we distinguish and know that? Cause we have it on here, but I don't see any meets and bounds or anything like that, that suggests that just the, the northern portion applies to this, but the Buffalo Reds does not, how, how do we?
Well, the-
How's that delineated here?
What is Buffalo Red and what is Wild Rice is determined somewhere else, and we just need to follow those.
Okay, so you're just-
We, we could add a map to this, this ordinance that does put that delineation line in. Um, I didn't put it in here, because this map is not quite detailed enough to be able to pick out where those lines fall down.
I just wonder if it wouldn't be a good idea for us to, to actually have that delineation map as part of the-
And the only concern with that, cause I, I did think about that as well, is that if there are any changes to the map, then that requires a constant amendment of the ordinance, unless we-
But the, when was the last time the water districts have changed?
Now, there wouldn't be any changes to the water district, you know, boundaries.
If that's the board's wishes, we certainly, and that's a very easy change, so.
Good clarification to the language.
Sure, yep, you definitely can do that, and maybe we'll say something like, based upon the map, Exhibit A, and any future changes made to that.
When the state reviewed it, did they have concern with that clause?
No, no, they, it went to the state, and we had to get a initial approval, which we got within a few days. And then, when we are done here, and if the board adopts this, we have to send the final resolution, um, and a couple of other things to the, again, to Bowser, um, to make sure that we've satisfied our requirements in terms of accepting jurisdiction and then receiving the accompanying funding that, that goes with it, so.
Just for clarification, do you think a minute change like that would affect our January first implementation?
I don't think so. No, I think the board can, um, if the, if the board wishes to adopt the ordinance today, and I'd point out that on the ordinance, it is labeled in your pack at two thousand seventeen dash thirty-five, but I believe that is a resolution number, thirty-five was the next resolution.
Oh.
It's not the ordinance, so, um, I'd ask just to adopt the ordinance, and, um, we'll get the number after board today and fill that in, there's not been thirty-five ordinances this year, um, thank goodness. But, um, and, and maybe the motion could include, i- if the board wishes, that additional, um, exhibit to be attached to the ordinance to further clarify the jurisdiction. But, Tim outlined very, uh, very well the enforcement mechanisms, and there's been meetings to talk about how this is going to work, and certainly it's a, um, it's a project in progress as to how this is going to flow, because it's brand new, and we have to see what's going to work, but, uh, yeah, the Soil and Water Conservation District would send us, uh, a notice of non-compliance, or some sort of indication that there is a, an issue. Um, and then the county is to follow up on that with notification, and then continued monitoring to make sure that the violation is remedied. In the end, um, if there is no non, if there is no compliance, the ordinance does give us the remedy of either issuing administrative penalty orders, which are essentially fines, um, that would, would accrue, and the, that's on, uh, under six point two, talks about initial violations and repeat violations, how much we would assess, um, if those violations weren't cured. Uh, and the ordinance also gives us the opportunity, if, you know, we feel it necessitates, that we can, um, also cite this as a misdemeanor and take court action. So it gives us two avenues of enforcement. I think that, I think everybody, all the discussion I've heard, it is nobody's wish to want to get to that point. Uh, there's a lot built into this ordinance that supports working together and trying to cure these defects before we get to that, uh, end-all, but, um, but in the, in the event that we had an issue, it gives us the enforcement power to cure that infraction, so.
Well, we still have the hearing open too, and I will ask for comments, but I'm just wondering, Commissioner Mojo, Commissioner Gross, were you also on that buffer committee? Do, do you have a, has this been?
Yeah.
Do you wanna give a little recap to the committee?
So, this is, this is kind of the product of a handful of meetings between the different entities in Clay County that, that really are gonna help do this, and so, while there aren't people here for the public hearing, this has really been a document that has been crafted from discussions with landowners. SWCD has contacted through letters, all of them, and has, has brought concerns and ideas to the table. Uh, the watersheds have, have brought concerns to the table, and so, you know, while there aren't people here, like I said, we really did have a lot of discussion with landowners. I specifically did in August and September before we decided who would be the enforcing agency. And I think I'll default to my comment earlier, that while we understand that this is not something that we are all a hundred percent excited about, uh, I think we're doing, uh, the best with what we're given, and, and I think all of the counties statewide are, are, um, and going forward with what the, the state regulated, and so I think we're trying to keep, uh, one control as local as possible, so that, uh, our landowners can, can deal with those that are closest to them.
I'm just happy that Soil and Water Conserv, stepped forward to do this for us, you know, so, otherwise we'd be out there doing this, you know, so, I think it's, it's the best we're gonna be able to do, you know, so.
And any other comments from the board? Comments from the public? Kevin, comments from the soil and water?
Soil and water.
No?
I appreciate your help, but both, both Commissioner, and Commissioner Gross, uh, seeing the table, bringing our groups together, and that is, for everybody to have a voice in, or what this thing is doing. This is something we asked for, it's something that was kind of fascinating, so we, we're with Brett here, I think that we're gonna do our best that we can to keep guys out of, of the violation, we don't want that to happen to you, so. I think that's, this is, this is, not that we need to smarten it into too many meetings, and this, so she doesn't have to prosecute.
All right. Thank you Kevin, and it's, Kevin's just spoke for, of local, the importance of local control, so I think that's, and that was this board's thoughts too, so, any other comments, uh, while the meeting, hearing is open? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Motion in a second to close. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same, motion carried. All right, uh, we have, um, requested action to-
I'll make a motion request, uh, to adopt this ordinance, whatever number it's gonna be, um.
With the change that Kevin proposed?
Yeah, with the, we're adding a map of the different areas.
All right. Second, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carried, thank you Tim, thank you Jenny. And thank you to that, uh, buffer committee group for, I, I'm assuming you're still gonna be working?
Yeah, we'll still need to do a handful of meetings to iron out the issues.
All right, very good. All right, we'll move into our nine fifteen item, and that is the annual state auditor's report, and we have our Bob Johnson here from the state auditor's office. Lori, you wanna come up, or you gonna stay back there?
I'm just gonna sit back here, thanks. I think so.
What are you worried about? Okay, all right. Well, good morning Bob.
Good morning. How's everybody today?
Good, it's always nice to see you for this once a year event, to get to hear how, Lori, how good a job Lori's done.
And I wanna start out with that, that, uh, Clay County does a wonderful job of making sure internal controls are in place and working the way they should be working, and they do a wonderful job in preparing for the audit and, and preparing the financial statements, so. We do appreciate all that, so, just wanna make sure the board knows that.
Oh, and, and we'll pass that on to the property people who do all the work.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Um, I'm just gonna run through some financial information first, and then I'll run through the scheduled findings, um, just kind of in a summary format, rather than the detail we normally do at the field exit, just so. So everyone's aware of your finances and, and aware of what we noted in the finding, in our schedule of findings, so. I know Jim Haney is new to the board, uh, so I guess I have a question for Jim. Do you know the difference between the fund level financial reporting and government-wide financial reporting?
No.
Okay. Um, if you have a copy of the report, Exhibit one and two are government-wide financial statements. Uh, they're the entity as a whole, they're on a full accrual basis of accounting, so they include all the long-term debt. They include, uh, all the long-term types of things like capital assets, that type of information. When you move a little farther back into the financial statements, the, you'll, you'll find in Exhibits three through, uh, six, I believe, uh, you'll find fund-level financial statements, they're governmental-type funds. Those are reported on what they call a modified accrual basis. They don't include the long-term, uh, items like long-term debt and capital assets, those types of things. They do include some things that aren't included in the government-wide, and what those things are, um, quite, you know, quite often a fund will do work for another fund. Um, so sometimes at year-end, you know, say the general fund might over-rode and bricked some money for some services that they provided to the general fund. There'll be things like do-tos, or do-between funds, and transfers between funds, and inner-fund type of activity that you won't see at the government-wide financial statements. A little farther back, there's enterprise-type operations, and those again are on a full accrual basis. So, I just thought I'd give you a short, a little summary.
Excellent, thank you for doing that.
I understand.
The first handout we have has a lot of financial information on it. Uh, we start out at the very top, talking a little bit about government-wide financial information. Uh, so I'll go through that first, then I'll step down to the second level there, where we start talking a little bit about fund financial information. We'll first talk a little bit about cash, and then I'll move into the unrestricted fund balance and total fund balances. Then I'll show you some, some, I've got some graphs that I've set up that have some five-year history, so that you can kind of see what's happened over the last five years, and then we'll go into the schedule of findings. Um, for the government-wide, the net position of Clay County at December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, was a hundred nine million, twenty-five thousand dollars. That's down about one million, eight hundred and eighteen from the previous year. Uh, you invest a lot in capital assets, um, so, net position, uh, the net investment in capital assets went up two million, six hundred ninety-three thousand from the previous year, and bought some land, you- the previous year. You bought some land, you started some construction projects, things like that. You also issued some debt which offset the, the increases in capital assets. Um, your restricted went down about $460,000, almost four, uh, $460,000, almost $461,000. Um, that was mostly restricted for highways and streets is what decreased there. Um, and your unrestricted went down $4,051,000. Uh, that's sort of the net effect. Part of it's due to your investments in capital assets and things like that. So, that money is no longer available to make decisions on because you've wrapped it up in capital assets and so on and so forth. Uh, so that was a decline of about 1.64%. Any questions on government-wide?
So, so Bob, on the, uh, for example now, the, the buildings that we're doing, they, they end up, the actual investment that we put into them shows up as an additional asset, just less any liabilities that would be there, just like any other business would do. Uh, the, and that, 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 that always just stays as that asset value. We don't, there's no increases for inflationary?
No increases for inflationary, but when we bring in those capital assets, we depreciate them over the life of the asset. So, I mean...
So on the books, they actually decrease in value?
They, they decrease in value as, as the assets are aging and wearing out, um, the valuation of those assets does go down. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Any other questions on government-wide? If not, I'm, I'm just going to move on. Uh, the state auditor recommends for the general fund that you have enough cash to sustain six months of operations. And the primary reason for that is that the general fund relies so much on the levy and you don't collect your taxes, uh, right away in the year. You've got to have a period of time before those taxes come in. So, we just want to make sure that you have enough cash on hand to pay your bills. Um, so at December 31st, 2016, the general fund had a cash balance of $8,642,000, almost $643,000. That would cover about 4.9 months of, of expenditures in that fund. So it's a little bit lower than the recommendation in the state auditor. It's up a little bit from last year. The ratio of cash balance to expenditures was about 4.6 months in the previous year. And your cash balance, the total cash in that fund went up $1,165,000 from the previous year. So, uh, the Roden Bridge Fund?
Just out of curiosity, if we were to add the Internal Service Fund into that, what would that 4.9 be?
I knew you were going to bring up that.
Well, it's only fair, right?
Um, if you added the Internal Service Fund, which is an entirely different type of fund, um, but if you did, you would have a cash balance of $10,616,000. And that would cover you about 5.56 months.
Or almost a full six month then.
So, almost the full six months that we recommend. And that is...
The state, you don't recognize the Internal Service Fund for that formula purpose?
For that formula, no, we don't generally because it's an entirely different type of fund.
But I think you should.
Okay. Um, Roden Bridge Fund had a cash balance of $4,984,000. That would cover that fund for about 5.7 months of operations. Um, and last year it was about five months of operations. So that's up a little bit from the previous year. Even though your cash balance went down, your expenditures went down in 2016, so the ratio has gone up a little bit. The Social Service Fund had a cash balance of, uh, $6,753,000, almost $754,000. That would cover about 3.8 months of, of expenditures. And, uh, that's down a little bit from the previous year, which was 4.9 months of expenditures. Um, and the total cash balance declined by, uh, $964,000 from the previous year. Um, we're not as concerned about the other funds because I, as I mentioned before, they're not as reliant on the levy. They've got funds coming in consistently throughout the year. So, I just kind of throw that in for, for little informational purposes there. Um, any questions on cash? Okay. I'll, uh, first talk a little bit about the unrestricted fund balance. Um, our recommendation is that you have sufficient unrestricted fund balance to cover five months of operation or five months of expenditures and fall somewhere between 35 to 50% of operating revenues. So, um, and that's based on the general fund and the special revenue funds combined. It's not on a fund-by-fund basis, but I like to present some of the funds so that you kind of know where your funds are. Uh, for the general fund, unrestricted fund balance was $7,444,000. That would cover you about 4.2 months of operation, up from 3.9 from the previous year. It's about 34% of your operating revenue. The Roden Bridge Fund, unrestricted fund balance, uh, was $2,280,000. Uh, that would cover you about 2.6 months of expenditures in that fund.
I just have a question on that. That one is a li, that's a little hard to gauge though with big projects, isn't it?
Yes. On an annual basis, the Roden Bridge Fund is very difficult to gauge.
Because the revenue's going in different?
Yeah. One year you might get a, a whole bunch of revenue and then the expenditures might take place in a different year or so.
Okay.
It is a tough one.
Or vice versa, it could be the opposite of that too.
Yep.
Expenditures can be in one year and the revenue comes later.
Yep. So, um, that one does fluctuate, or it's typical that the Roden Bridge Fund fluctuates from year to year. Um, that one, you had enough unrestricted fund balance, I think I've mentioned this already, to cover about 2.6 months and it's about 19% of your operating revenues. Um, the Social Service Fund had unrestricted fund balance of $6,629,000. That would cover about 3.8 months of expenditures. That's down a little bit from the previous year, which was five months' worth of expenditures. And it's 33% of your operating revenues. If you take the general fund and all the special revenue funds combined, and that's not on your handout, um, that would be unrestricted fund balance of $16,463,000. And it would cover about 3.4 months of expenditures and is about 30% of your operating revenues. So, again, it's a little bit lower, but, you know, as Kevin mentioned, you do have the Internal Service Fund. Um, and if you looked at the Internal Service Fund, it's not unrestricted fund balance, it's, it's net position because it's a different type of fund. You would have $1,901,000 worth of, uh, unrestricted net position. That would cover you about 13 months' worth of expenditures in that fund, based on 2016. And that is about 121% of that, that recommendation. So, um, based on operating revenues. Any questions on any of that finance, financial information? Kevin, Kevin, I know you're on top of all that type of stuff, so I, I don't worry so much.
I, I don't think it looks bad at all. I think it's in good shape. So, thank you much.
Um, I'm just going to kind of buzz through these graphs. I'm not going to give a lot of detail on them. I just, partly for Jim, I just kind of want to point out a couple of things. Um, the, the next handout I'm looking at is revenues over the last five-year period. A couple of things I want to put up, point out is, is your revenue sources. Taxes are your main revenue source as well as intergovernmental revenue. If you look at the graphs, you can see those are, those are your two main revenue sources. Your taxes have gone up a little bit each year over the last five years. That's pretty typical. That's what I see. And when I don't see that, what I, I do tend to see is if county boards have held the taxes down for a number of years, then they, a lot of times will end up having to do a much larger jump. Um, so that seems to be the basic trend that I, I see the most. And intergovernmental revenue, as I said, you, you do receive a lot of state and federal funding. That's the, the other major resource. Looking at the graphs, you can kind of see all the other sources of revenues are, are pretty minor compared to those two revenue sources. Any questions? Okay. Um, I'm just going to move on to the next one. It's, it's dealing with the expenditures over the last five-year period. Again, a couple of things. I'm not going to hammer the trends other than human services, the, the trend that has been going up each year for the last five years. Um, but as you can kind of see from there, you can see where your major expenditures are. They're in general government, public safety, highways and streets, and human services. All the other categories are pretty minor compared to those four categories. And that is basically the major functions of all the counties in the surrounding area. They, that's where their expenditures are also.
The, the, obviously where we clearly have the biggest expense rise is in the human services area. I, you, uh, does the state in doing audits of other counties, is, is that a typical trend that you see amongst other counties?
I, I think it's been pretty much a general trend that human services has been expanding, yeah.
I know that maybe some of the smaller counties don't experience it like we do and I, and I'm just wondering how much of it could be attributed to us being a, a border, uh, a border county too, if that's got some issues separate than other counties?
I don't know the answer to, Kevin, so.
Part of my question on that, and I know you probably can't answer this, but, but yes, the human services expenditures have gone up considerably. However, it seems to me they've been creative in the grants that they've been getting in that. And so is a large, now this isn't all county dollars.
Correct.
Clearly, there's a large percent that's federal and grant dollars as well.
That is.
And also Clay County's a host for some of these multi-county, and that would show up in this, right?
Um, not all of it, no. Um, for example, you're the host for Partnership for Health and we, we showed the expenditures for each of the membership counties and in those counties.
So ours, our show is just our membership share?
I believe so, yes.
But it would, I mean, I know we don't have a separate graph for the federal dollars or the additional.
Right. Well, I, I think that would show up on the revenue side though on...
Generally, you can see some trends at, at times where, you know, especially in the highway, when you see intergovernmental revenue spike, that's usually about the time period, either that year, the year before, or the year after where expenditures in that fund spike. Um, so you can do some correlation between where the revenues are coming in and expenditures going out.
Very good question.
Okay. Um, the last three are just the fund balances and I'm just kind of showing the trends of the fund balances. The general fund, um, actually went down a little bit. Both the total fund balance and unrestricted went down a little bit in 2013, up in 14, down in 15, and then back up in 16. Um, but overall, the general trend has been an upward trend over the five-year period. You're up about, in, in total fund balance, you're up about 1.4 million, almost 1.5 million. And in your unrestricted, you're up about 1.3 million. So, um, the five-year trend has been more upward. It's bounced, but it's been more of an upward trend. Um, your Roden Bridge Fund, um, the total fund balance spiked back in 2013. I believe you issued some bonds back in 2013 and that's what that spike is from. Uh, but total and unrestricted went up in 13. Total went down in 14, but unrestricted continued to go up. And, and then in 15, total went down and unrestricted still continued to go up. And then 16, they both came down a little bit. Um, overall, over the five-year period, you're up about 3.9 million in total fund balance and just a little bit over 3 million in your unrestricted fund balance. Should we move on or?
Sure.
You gotta, okay. And then the last fund that I, I graphed out for you is the Human Service Fund. That went down some in 2013, up in 14, down in 15, and down in 16 some. Um, over the five-year period, your total fund balance is down about 1.4 million. And your unrestricted is down about 1.3 million from, from what it was back in 2012.
Well, I do, uh, I wanted to go, go back just for a minute to the fund balance of the Roden Bridge. And you brought up the bond issue in 2013. And so that obviously brought everything up because we had a lot of monies there that hadn't been spent yet, right?
Yep.
So, um, do you, um, after all this was done and some of these projects were done, we had some analytical work that was done to determine, did it really benefit us by advancing all these projects up with these bonds?
Mm-hmm.
So that was an analytical process that we did and, and our highway department did with some consultation. Do you, does the state auditors ever look at that type of thing to, as a, a way to help confirm to us what, if it was a good thing to do or not financially? Do you get into that at all?
I guess we haven't.
Okay. Okay.
Um, we certainly can if you requested it.
Okay.
But we, we have not come back and analyzed whether, you know, if you do bonding like that, if you'd be better off by doing the projects earlier.
Well, a lot of what we do, you, you, you try things and ultimately, were they successful or not?
Yep.
In the purpose. And, and so we've done, you know, we went through some process that said it, yes, it was. But I'm just wondering if, if we were to ask the state auditor's office if they could confirm or just be another resource for us?
At this point, I can't confirm.
No, not for, not for what was done before. But I'm talking about in the future, if we were to do that again.
Yeah.
Is that available to us?
Yeah. If you, if you want us to do some accounting services, we're more than happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Just a, just a resource, I guess I'm looking for.
Okay. Um, moving on, scheduled findings. Uh, the first page is there because you, you have a single audit. And when we, uh, send the package into the clearinghouse, they can look at this first page and they know a lot about your audit. First of all, we issued an unmodified opinion on your financial statements. That's the good opinion. That's the one that you want. Um, we had some findings that we noted. Um, we didn't have any material weaknesses in internal control, but we did note some things and we, the terminology used is significant deficiencies. What that really means is we had reportable findings. Um, there was no non-compliance material to the financial statements noted. Uh, the federal award programs, um, we had no material weaknesses and we had no significant deficiencies identified that were reported. Um, the type of report issued for compliance of your federal award programs is an unmodified opinion again. So that's the clean opinion. That's what you want. The programs that we tested were TANF and foster care programs this year. And Clay County did qualify as a low risk quality this year for the federal award program. So, I want to congratulate you on that. Now, we were able to do that and bring, bring your status down for your federal awards as a low risk quality because we went for two years in a row with no material weaknesses noted and no, no big issues with your federal award program. So, that's a good thing. Um, the items that we did note, uh, is that we noted that there is a weakness in the internal control over segregation of duties in your small fee offices. This gets brought up every year. Um, and it gets brought up basically in, in almost every county. So this isn't unusual. But you have a number of collection points or fee offices where you collect money. And one person has the record-keeping function and the custody function until you accumulate so much. Then you bring it over to the auditor treasures office and it gets deposited. And once it gets there, there's, there's good segregation of duties. It's just, other than those fee offices. I have resolved this with one of my counties recently. What they do, um, they go out and do departmental audits periodically and they're doing some analytics on their fee offices just to monitor the fees. And if something unusual pops up, they go out and ask the questions, what happened here? Why did our fees suddenly drop off or, or whatever? So, and we just can't see that there's much, much more that you could do beyond that. So, um, one of my counties recently, I have resolved that comment. Um, the next item is dealing with publishing itemized claims. Um, it's a statutory thing. Minnesota statute three point, or 375.12 requires the board, the county board minutes to be published within 30 days. Um, and provide an itemized list of board-approved payments over $2,000. Um, the county's been publishing the minutes, but not the itemized list over $2,000.
However, I did notice in our last group of minutes, we did publish the anyways.
We've got them started.
We've, uh, taken your suggestion, grinning and burying it.
I know. I know. Um, it's a statutory thing.
Right. That's good.
How long is that?
Transparency, it's funny.
How long is that?
It's been out, it's been out there for a long time, Kevin.
But our question was how many counties are doing that?
And, and part of why it's being brought to light more is it's been kind of noticed that we haven't been reporting. We've been presenting it as an oral comment. And it is a statutory thing. And the feeling is that if it's brought more to the attention, um, the counties might go push the legislation to change the statute. Otherwise, we have to follow, you know, we have to follow the law.
That's fine.
So, um, so that's kind of why it got elevated a little bit higher this year from our standpoint. our standpoint. Um, the last item here is we, as we were doing some eligibility testing on the medical assistance program, we didn't actually test that program this year, we did a follow-up on, on some items we noted from the previous year. Um, so our sample size was only fifteen cases that we looked at, but out of fifteen cases, we noted two, two instances where the county had not obtained documentation to support or otherwise verify the value of assets, and one instance where income was not verified. Um, three out of fifteen, sounds terrible, but we also, I mean, we looked at a number of items for each of those fifteen cases, um, and we're just kind of presenting it so that, that we get our, our case files cleaned up a little bit better and, and make sure that the documentation in the case files matches what goes into the national system and is supported. Any questions on that?
Okay, so, so you have a recommendation here, and it has, has, um, has our human re, our, um, Human Services Department seen those recommendations?
Yeah.
Okay.
They've, they've actually requested a listing of the case, cases that we noted, the issues, and.
Okay.
Um, have, have requested, uh, kind of a checklist that we kind of follow, so that they've got the information to, to make sure that they know that they're, that they can share with their caseworkers on what all has to be in the case files and how they have to all match, so. Okay?
Okay, very good, thank you.
And that's about all I have.
Just a quick comment that I was the commissioner that was in the meeting where we reviewed this with staffs.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, bud.
Good work, thank you. Good work, Lori, to your department.
Yeah, great work for Lori and her staff again, so.
Okay, and that, uh, that brings us to our committee reports. I mean, who did I start with last week, because maybe I'll start with Commissioner Mojo today.
Okay, sounds good. Last week, I attended the Planning Commission, we, uh, had a public hearing for the request for conditional use of the storage facility that we've heard for the past two and a half years. Uh, there was extended discussion with some residents, also discussion, the city of Moorhead had attached some additional conditional or criteria that they wanted added in. It was all, for the most part, what we had had discussions about in regards to assessing a, um, access agreement for the city, for the road, for the future development, uh, talking about drainage, uh, the proposed pond that was in there, fence trees. I do have the.
Schematic?
Schematic, if you'd like to see that. Uh, that was approved, so that, that issue will be, or has been remedied. We also had discussion on the, yep, uh, buffer ordinance that was proposed to you earlier, so we just kind of reviewed that, and then there's, uh, some issues with a Baker property. Uh, the proper course is being followed by Jenny Schmarja and Tim to remedy that, so we just had an update on continuation of that. I had a MetroCog meeting last week where we discussed some, uh, HR issues. I attended a Buffalo financial planning, uh, a buffer financial planning meeting that we had with the county, the watershed, and SWCD in regards to how we foresee that allotment of funds from the state being divided, uh, in terms of what line item it's going to be and in what department, so I think it was a good meeting in terms of clarity going forward. Uh, Thursday, I had a full board meeting for MetroCog. We are saddened by the unexpected passing of Bill Christian, uh, who is the executive director of that group, so I, in light of that, for staff, some items were moved to consent, and we minimized the agenda. Michael Maddox has been appointed interim executive director, that's a small staff, so that, that's a huge loss for them. There is a, there had been an open, uh, position as a transportation planner, uh, that a, a job offer has been offered to them, and then we also approved their twenty eighteen health insurance plan. Uh, if any of you are wanting, there is a visitation for Bill this evening, so if you want the details, let me know. Uh, yesterday, I was a part of the Governor's Task Force for discussion on the diversion authority. As you know, there's a, a pretty good representation of individuals from the region. The governors have asked that we, uh, allow them to be the spokesman for the group, but I can tell you that, uh, the discussion really was important and good, and I think in the end, uh, a, a plan that has a lot of basis will be better in the end to, um, protect the valley, so, uh, I want to thank Fargo for hosting that meeting yesterday, uh, and the North Dakota Chamber, Bernie Dartis for supplying the lunch for that group. The next meeting will be November first in Moorhead from nine to three, those, all of the meetings will be open to the public. We will be having nine to three meetings every other week with an hour phone call on the off weeks, with a deadline of December fifteenth for a recommendation, uh, so we'll see. It's, it's an aggressive schedule, but I think it's good to have an end goal, because sometimes some of these things can drag on.
Do you have a location for that?
Uh, I'm working with Delray Williams to finalize that, so I will email you when I hear.
While I'm thinking about that, I think we should approve, or I'd make a motion to approve per diem for Jenny for those meetings for the Governor's Task Force.
Thank you.
The motion is there second?
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All the same, right? Okay, and all those meetings are open to the public, right?
Yep.
So that, does that conclude your report?
Yes.
Mr. Wayland?
Uh, let's see, I went to a, uh, meeting, a trail meeting, bike trail meeting, uh, part of which was involved the Heartland Trail in Detroit Lakes last week at the Department of Transportation, and was, uh, mainly to go over with the staff, you know, where the trails are likely to go, and, uh, the, the Heartland Trail, at least for, you know, for the state now, has become a priority trail, at least the section between Moorhead and Detroit Lakes, so we'll see if that actually means anything, we get any movement and any funding for it in the future, so. And they're looking for any other trails or, uh, in, in, like, in the counties, in, in their region that, uh, you know, any other trails that might be planned in, in counties that, that are not state trails, but are, are regional trails, so. Uh, let's see, what else? I had a meeting, we had a, um, Detention Advisory Board meeting last week, and, uh, went over general business, and then we had, uh, lengthy discussions about, uh, the new agreement that we're proposing, and, uh, I think everybody seemed pretty supportive of it, and the plan is, is to, we need approval sometime this year so we can move forward with, uh, the expansion at the detention center, and so we're looking at having a meeting in hopefully early December with, that'll be open to the commissioners from all the eleven involved counties.
I think just to follow up to that, I, um, you know, I think it's, there was, there was some discussion, should we just have our staff go to each county board, and that would put an awful lot of burden between now and end of the year on our staff to do that, and we, so we felt that we should still hold this, um, open meeting, you know, for all member counties, uh, which Commissioner Wayland said, I think we're gonna probably, we're gonna probably look at the week following the intergovern, or the, uh, the annual meeting in December, so the, so, that, you know, right now, that's, we're gonna just have to pick a date and go with it, uh, and those that can make it, can make it, and those that can't, can't. Uh, because to try to get, you know, a, you know, potentially fifty-five county commissioners.
Right.
Uh, to all be able to attend isn't gonna work, so we're gonna, we're gonna just do that and be ready. Uh, and I, as a follow-up, I think you all did receive a, a, a draft of this, I think you might have been.
We talked about it last week.
Oh, yeah, we talked about it last week. Well, I think as, you know, we got some other, uh, changes that happened after this last meeting, and so those, those will be updated and they'll be sent out again, so you see those before we meet as all member counties, and we'll give another report, uh, to our board, because there's, our board still has a, obviously, we have a major, you know, importance and say in, in all of this, because I'm, we're, we're, this is to protect Clay County, you know, and that facility, because it's on our property, so we want to make sure, and each of you need to be sure in your mind that we're, we've got all those issues covered, so, but we'll, we'll, we'll update you quite frequently between now and then, and as Commissioner Wayland said, the goal was, is even though this new document will not take effect until a, a addition would be complete, we, we want everybody signing on to that document before we go to bid, because we need to, we need to make sure all of our partners are gonna be on board with us when we make the, that financial commitment, so.
And I think all the commissioners that were, that are on the board understand that.
Yeah.
And we're in agreement that that needs to be done before we move forward, so.
Right, okay. All right, I didn't mean, I just wanted to follow up.
No, that's fine, that's, I'm done.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Gross?
Uh, Tuesday, with Highway Tracking, and, uh, Dave reported that they're applying for Tiger Grants, uh, for the Linden Project on Park Avenue that we've been talking about, we're looking at applying for about four, little over four million dollars in, in grants to help that project out, and, and there's also some project in Comstock, Halling, Yulin, that we're looking at about three million, three hundred thousand dollars in Tiger Grants, and hopefully we can get those to help those towns out. Um, the Hallen Shop, which we've been working on all summer to get that thing in fall, we get it closed, that, we closed on that, uh, the Saban Pedestrian Walk, Crosswalk, which we already talked about, it's been completed, uh, um, we got an update on the Linden Project, and also we talked a little bit about some presentations at our Fall Township Meeting that are coming up. Um, then I went to the Planning Commission Tuesday night, and I was glad to see that they approved, uh, that Moorhead, and, uh, uh, they got together with the owners of that property, and, uh, I'm moving ahead on that, uh, glad, just glad to see that, and, uh, Jenny's already reported on that. Wednesday, with the buffer meeting, again, Jenny reported on that one, uh, which was discussed some more today. Uh, Wednesday night, I went to Historical Society, there are good reports there, St. John's Bible, which is, uh, being presented till December thirty-first, a lot of attendance going on there. Attendance is up at the Historical Society this year, finances are better this year, so everything is, is going good there. Friday, we had, um, meeting on the Family Service Center over there, relocating some people, um, trying to find space for the juvenile, uh, the juvenile needs some administrative office space, and, uh, we're looking at relocating some, and that's all in the process of going, it's working good, uh, hopefully we can get everybody happy there, and, uh, and they, part of that, we give it, we were given a tour of the, the detox center over there, and, uh, that was a, quite an experience to go through that thing, you know, and I mean, I've been around here for a while now, and I haven't gone through that place before, and, uh, it's amazing what this county is doing, you know, when you compare us to other counties, you know, there, we have a medical detox center here, there's only ten of them in the state, and we are responsible for one of them, you know, and they cost money, so, uh, I think they're doing a good job over there, I was very impressed with their presentation. That's it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Aine?
I attended the meeting along with Commissioner Gross, uh, that he was referring to yesterday, uh, for the Campus Improvement Committee, and, uh, we heard the purpose to move the, um, juvenile probation into the space vacated by Solutions, and, uh, also looked at, uh, the Clay County Detox, and, uh, looking at moving an office for the Director of the Detox into that same wing where the, um, Solutions is coming out. Initially, it was gonna be all for public health, but they don't need the space at this point in time, so we've got, uh, a short window of time that we can do this, in four or five years, something like that, and, uh, that's my only report.
All right, thank you. All right, I had, on, uh, last week, on Tuesday afternoon, we had the Highway Tracking Committee, and Commissioner Gross has, um, given a good report on that, so I don't need to add any more on that. Also, that afternoon, uh, we did meet, um, as a subcommittee, uh, regarding the West Central Juvenile, uh, and that was to, um, go over some of the things that would be presented on that Thursday, so, uh, that was a helpful meeting in preparation. And on Thursday, we did have the Regional Juvenile Detention Meeting, we fully discussed that. Um, that afternoon, uh, that, right after that, at noon, I was invited by the Moorhead Lions to go and, and talk to them, give them an update on our, our construction projects and other issues, and I was amazed at the amount of questions that they had on, on county issues, and they were, they were really, they were really focused, that was, uh, it was fun to see how, how they were, and that, that was actually at that meeting too, where that issue came up about regarding County Nine and Twenty-Six, and you'd think that, um, people from Moorhead wouldn't have a concern for that, but they, they actually, they get out in their rural areas, and they're concerned about public safety, so. Um, so the Biography Council, that's been discussed, um, and let's see, I think that wraps it up. I did want to, um, mention that, and I gave you all a copy of this, I sent a, a letter out to the Minnesota Association of Watershed Districts, they have a Project of the Year process, and, um, I sent a letter of support for the, now that the Oakport Project is done, uh, but, uh, I sent a letter of support that that should be, uh, considered for Project of the Year in the state of Minnesota, and I copied you all because I did, at the very end of it, I did, I did say on behalf of the County Commission, uh, we were thankful and appreciative for what the watershed did for that project and the importance of that is to the county. And that's, uh, that's all that I have, Darren, except for, uh, Darren, if you want to give a report, but, then I, just a follow-up with you that we need to, um, plan, uh, that meeting, or we need to have, Brian's gone, we need to have some help in getting that meeting planned for the West Central for December, so I don't know if, maybe, maybe we can spend a couple minutes after this to.
Sure.
Uh, start on that process, so.
Okay.
All right, Darren, if you have a.
Um, the only things we had was, uh, last Thursday, we had a central admin meeting, uh, with all the central admin department heads. Open enrollment is hot and heavy now, uh, we're hoping that everybody turns in their stuff by the end of the week, Friday is the deadline, so, um, that is ongoing, and, uh, just dealing with some, a couple personnel issues. That's it.
A question for Jenny, um, when it comes to the public notice for that, for the eleven member county, and then we also have Cass County from North Dakota, is the, is the one publication by the entity good enough, or does each member county have to give notice of, of that meeting?
Yeah, each member county would need to publish because their particular meeting is tied to their official county paper.
Okay.
So if we made a, um, posting in the extra, we comply with our requirements, but a posting in the extra would not necessarily comply with a different county's requirements.
Is the AMC meeting on there?
Yeah, yeah, I wonder, yeah, we'll have to, yeah, I think each, each member county has to do the same thing as the AMC.
You can update that on Friday, right?
Pardon?
I mean, the majority of those, not all of them, but a lot of them are at the meeting on Friday.
Yeah, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to give a whole lot there because of the, the agenda that's already been established there, but.
But when you update, or county update, could you say that we're planning?
Yes, yeah, I'd like to, it'd be nice if we could have the date.
Yeah.
Um, down there, but then we need a location to handle it, kind of.
Yep.
You know?
Yeah, before any posting can happen, we need kind of those specifics, so that's the first step in terms of, uh, at, in turn, of publication, at least.
Okay, and then each member county then would have to.
Yeah.
Go, and, and the typical timeframe for notice to the, to the media is?
Ten days.
Ten days? Okay.
You know, the Offit School of Business has a great, larger room, I don't think, if you're expecting upwards of fifty, I think we.
Oh, well, we, we'll probably, because a lot of them said they We'll probably, because a lot of them have said they want to bring their human resources people and maybe their law enforcement people.
That's a really good room.
What's, what's the possibility of doing like a video conference type thing?
We kind of, we kind of don't want to do that if we can help it, but.
Some of the smaller counties, I'm not sure if they're, they weren't real excited about that.
Yeah, I think there's.
Okay.
I know if you live with Space Dill Committee Center, accommodate two to three.
Okay, all right, well, we'll, we'll, we'll plan it, we'll work on that plan and let you all know. I just wanted to know the legality, so what we had to accomplish, so. All right, Jenny, anything else?
I had, I had one thing I just thought of, and I should get better at keeping you advised of, you know, the ever, the ever-going tax court litigation that we as a county have, and that luckily falls in my, in my realm, but we always have those petitions, and certainly it's something that the board should be kept up to date on, so. I just thought of it this week, we had a pretty significant motion hearing on Walmart petition that, that is currently in place. So we got rid of Menards and all those petitions, and now we've entered the, the time of the Walmart petition. So the motion, we got pretty aggressive with our motion practice here, and we made a motion to dismiss based on a failure to provide some financial information that the statute says must be provided by the petitioning party, and that was yesterday, it was quite a significant hearing, and I've gotten a lot of feedback from county attorney's offices through the state that are really watching what's happening here in Clay County, so just like Menards, we're somewhat of a trendsetter there. But I think what might be beneficial is, I think about once a year, I'll, I have done a closed session, legal update, we can talk more details and more strategy and those kind of things, but I just wanted you to be aware, especially with some AMC functions coming up, you might hear word about this tax court thing that Clay County is doing, and it's pretty interesting, so we'll cross our fingers and hope that it turns out positive.
Thank you for bringing that up, and it is a major topic of discussion at AMC level too.
Okay.
Because there is, there is some real concern about some of these big bucks.
Yeah, I call them serial petitions, you know, because they, once they're filed, they continue to be filed and filed, and so we have to have a very strategic approach to them to minimize the impact on, on the tax levy.
At AMC, they have a different name for it, but anyway, it's being discussed at the AMC level, and there's even, I think there's some proposed legislation that AMC is trying to get going through on this to help these counties, and just, all right, thank you, Jenny. Lee, anything else? Had any other, we do not have a meeting next week, is that correct? All right, so our next meeting will be on Tuesday, November seventh, and we'll be adjourned.